We are at eight eighteen P M. We're going to start our regular city council meeting. And welcome everyone. We're at City Hall one hundred Polk Avenue. It is a pretty lengthy agenda, but a lot of it for encouraging is I think going to move quickly as we get into the redundant public hearing items. However, at this time, I want to call the meeting to order and ask Mayor Pro Tim Callum to please lead us in the pledge. Thank you. This time, City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis, Mayor Pro Tim Callum, Mayor Morrison,
Here.
Councilmember Raymond,
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. This time we are going to go into our public participation portion of the meeting. They asked if you haven't filled out a card, please fill it out. You'll have three minutes. Just explain the lights. The lights will go green when your three minutes start. I think at about thirty seconds, it'll go yellow and you'll conclude when it buzzes at red. First card that I have here is trying to get the order here. Making sure I don't get a redundant one. Thank you. Mr. Andrew Dodge.
Hello, I'm Andrew Dodge from three ninety-five Harbor Drive. Thank you for taking my public comments here. I wanted to make a few notes here, a couple of things, and then I have more of a general request. The first thing I'd like to say is that I think it's important that we all adhere to the code of conduct, which talks about I will demonstrate dignity, respect, and courtesy towards those or others. It also mentions about listening to other people's ideas and, you know, given the freedom to, you know, not be indignant or, you know, I saw a lot of different responses up here tonight and I was, I felt disrespected by a few of them just by arguing or interrupting and stuff. And I think we can all be kind and work together and and accomplish this because everybody's idea is important and, you know, some people might not understand or we need to get through it. In addition to that, I'd like to make requests that in the future that the meeting length is too long. I think we need to split these up. If there's this many agenda items, not everybody can sit or stay for a very long, you know, meeting. We had a planning meeting the other night that ran a long time. It was, you know, talking about the future Cape Canaveral and stuff, and some of those are just too long to get through. And I know I'm making this longer. As far as beautifying, we talked about beautifying Cape Canaveral here. I think we need to look at moving the power lines underground. That's something I've been pushing consistently. But the last thing I'd like to say is that I'd like a push, or I'm going to work on a referendum to move that we vote on projects of certain natures above a certain dollar amount. I have no problem with fixing, you know, drain lines, whatever costs for things like that within reason, but you know, purchasing your property, doing things that are outside of this multi-generational facility. I think that really needs to be a vote of the people. And I think that makes it a lot more easy or palatable to, for everybody to take in case instead of four people or five people just making the decision and having it happen and spending our money when it comes to a large amount. That's kind of hard to, you know, to swallow, especially when you find out about it afterwards. But if there's a vote, nobody has an excuse at that point. Everybody knew. You have to sell it. You have to come up with the reason, you know, what you're going to build, what you're going to do with something, present it ahead of time. So I really recommend that the council make an ordinance to require that. Otherwise, I think our citizens are going to have to force a referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bruce Robertson.
My name is Bruce Robertson, as you know, and I live at three oh nine Washington. I, guys, probably sick of hearing from me tonight. I just wanted to speak out on our favorite topic, the roundabout. And if you were here before, you know how I feel about it. I think it's a bad proposal. I think it is a pedestrian. It's dangerous to pedestrians. It replaces actual streetlights, which are the only proven way of slowing down traffic with yield signs, which, as I said before, I had a traffic officer tell me most motors view of suggestions. Regarding the roundabout, it's probably the most unpopular thing I can think of among my friends and neighbors. I don't know anybody who wants it. I know the businesses that are on the side of A one A where it's supposed to be constructed. A framed chicken, she told me it would put her out of business. Kennedy's Bar, the laundromat. Once again, small businesses getting binged over grandiose projects. Now, I understand it's a state road and I understand the city council has no jurisdiction. They only have a very limited input to F dot. The subtext on this is if F dot wants it, you're going to get it. And if you don't want the roundabout, it's a take it or leave it deal. If you don't want the roundabout, you don't get anything else. You don't get the median. You don't get the landscaping. You don't get anything. However, I have heard that other cities, Indian Harbor Beach, I was told, they were scheduled for a roundabout and they fought it. And F dot backed down. So council and city manager might want to get together with whoever's running Indian Harbor and see how they did that. Because as again, I can't think of a less popular item that's coming up. I don't know what the timeline is on this. I know what I saw at the Radisson, I was told F dot would take our suggestions or our cards. I really don't know how seriously that's going to be looked at. But I do know among my friends and my neighbors and the businesses on the side of it, they view the roundabout as is an incredible negative. The way to slow down traffic, and I've heard, oh, but we need to slow down traffic on A one A, and we do. The way to slow down traffic is with red lights, not roundabouts and yield signs. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And we will be taking up the roundabout if we get to it towards the end, and I think we'll be able to address some of your comments there. Ms. Sarah Hodge.
Do you need me to repeat the address and everything or?
No, I think we have you on the record.
The Radisson meeting, the survey showed eighty-four percent against the roundabout. Why are we still even considering it? Why didn't we oppose this immediately? The Indian Harbor, the reason their council opposed it in the front. So once the citizens got involved, F D O T backed down. So why haven't we made a position on that? And, you know, no one that I've talked to, and I've talked to several, are for it. There's all kinds of complications. Our citizens are going to be completely affected by it because no one's going to use it. They're going to go around North Atlantic, Central, Ridgewood, anywhere they can go, other than go through that roundabout. And why, I've even been told the port doesn't support it because they're going to get a lot of traffic through George King, and they don't have the capacity. So why? Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Con- Jim Connor, Jim Connan.
Probably my illegible handwriting. It's Cannon. Last name's Cannon. It's fine. I'm Jim Cannon. I am the new intergovernmental coordinator for the St. John's River Water Management District. I'm sure some of you worked with my predecessor. She has taken a position with the city of Melbourne. So she's still around, but I've stepped into stepped into her role. I joined the district December fifteenth, so I've been there roughly a month. Moved down from Pittsburgh and apparently just in time, based on what I've seen with the weather. In Pittsburgh, I held a similar role. It was an external affairs position with a large electric utility in the Northeast. Prior to that, I was, I managed government affairs in oil and gas production. So water management, I'm getting up, I'm not quite up to crawl speed yet, but I'll get there. So I'm trying to take in and absorb as much as I can any kind of information related to water, water quality, water management issues. So I'll get there. But in the meantime, if you have any questions, if you need any information regarding the district, please let me know. I've done some initial outreach via email to other cities and at the county level, I would be happy to send all of you send all of you an email as a follow up to provide you my contact information if that's the easiest way to do it.
Yes, that would be appreciated.
Did you take Abby's position?
Yes.
Thank you. And are you coming to Space Coast League of Cities?
I am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. I think we're good. Thank you very much, Jim. Welcome.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Our council cards are outside near the reception desk?
I saw them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to introduce and welcome. Mr. Scott Holmes, please.
Thank you again. My name is Scott Holmes at eighty-one oh two Ridgewood Avenue. I just wanted to ask for an update on the Waste Pro discussion that we had last council meeting on December twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one. And I also wanted to just briefly discuss or re-talk about what the discussion was back then, which is that Waste Pro has a contract with the city of Cape Canaveral stating that they are the only company that citizens are allowed to use if they want to rent a dumpster, if they're doing any type of home improvement or what have you on their property. And I feel that that's not fair. It's very much like the city of Cape Canaveral telling all their citizens where they can only buy pizza, as an example. You can only go to Wise Guys. Remember that. But anyhow, you know, one of my, I stand up here to represent all of the the small dumpster companies throughout Brevard County that do an exceptional job. And I'm not stating that Waste Pro doesn't because they do. It's just that I don't believe that they should have a monopoly in the city of Cape Canaveral. One, because they they can't provide the service that some of the small dumpster companies can. And I'll use an example. You call up Waste Pro and you want to rent a fifteen yard dumpster. They will tell you it's not available because they're used for their large projects only, new home developments. But they do have twenty and thirty yards available, which don't fit in people's driveway because they're too long. And oftentimes, it's too much dumpster for what people are looking for. And I'll give you an example of that happened recently with a customer of mine. He was doing a project at one twenty-two Tyler and he had one of my dumpsters and he had it because he called Waste Pro and Waste Pro couldn't deliver. Then the code enforcement officer stopped by and was was talking to him about how he was going to find him and so forth because he wasn't using a Waste Pro dumpster. So he said, listen, here's what I'm going to do. He called Waste Pro on the phone while he was standing there with the code enforcement officer and Waste Pro said, we will gladly have a dumpster to you in seven to ten days. That is just ridiculous, thinking that our citizens have to be strong armed by Waste Pro when there are a whole host of other duly qualified companies that can serve the community, not only with smaller dumpster sizes, but also, quite honestly, with with more favorable pricing. And I really just want to see if the council has given consideration to the last thing that me and Platt discussed. So.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. I think our minutes tonight reflect, we'll probably have some sort of update from our city manager, maybe towards the reports at the end of the meeting, unless you feel like now is the best time.
I'd be glad to. With the holidays and COVID, Platt and I didn't get to talk until today. Actually, we spoke today. I reminded him of where we ended up last time and that the under twenty yards don't do not appear to be regulated by the contract. He said, I remember, let me go back and look at that and verify with you. I'll call you back.
I think that would be a great, great temporary solution for the community.
So if you want to call me back within the next couple of days, I hopefully have an answer for you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Hodge. Mr. Hodge, I believe you have the same address as Ms. Sarah Hodge, and we will have that on the record.
Three six nine Crow Drive. I just also wanted to voice my opinion that the council, the previous council came very close to passing a resolution or ordinance or something stating that the city doesn't really want a roundabout. But for some reason, the city manager pulled in the weight, we're in early process. I don't know why he brought that up because he's supposed to be working for the citizens in the council. He's not supposed to be doing things like that. But anyway, it happened. But anyway, trying to get fifty percent of people to vote on the same thing is almost impossible. And here we had eighty-four percent said they don't want the roundabout. So why are we even hesitating and talking about it? We should be stopping that. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Ms. Kay Jackson. And Kay, it looks like I have two cards for you.
Yes. And I had this to the agenda item, but I'm afraid I'm not going to be here till midnight when y'all get to thirteen. And I'm worried about not giving you this feedback so that the council is aware of some things going on with Pro Champs. So I thought I'd take three minutes now so that you're aware of some things that are going on. So right now I'm dealing with multiple things with Pro Champs. We have several owners in our community that are, and several owners and citizens here, one a remote owner and one a citizen have provided me with lists of rental units and whether they've been able to find that they're in compliance with their licensing. And upon looking at these lists, it is very deceiving. And I do not think Pro Champs has the capability to understand this. In one property, there's a hundred and eight units. I know there's a lot more issues than what is said. There were around nineteen issues listed, including, and I'm upfront and honest, guys, including mine, because I'm still doing five days with a blocked day for COVID cleaning at the beginning and a blocked day for COVID cleaning at the end. Okay, so that keeps it out of service with one guest for seven days. Mine were on there, okay, some of the units I manage. However, I know of four units that are absolutely renting with no license at all, no D V P R license, no B T R license with the city. And I looked at the code at the county level, and the county level code indicates that based on the number of vehicles in your driveway for a certain amount of time and the number of get people that pass through, you can be termed as a, oops, as a transient rental. So I haven't seen any way that Pro Champs is able to do this, nor has anyone I am aware of been even notified with a courtesy letter or any of those things. However, all of my owners got a courtesy notice because of the five day with a blocking out a day before and a day after, as well as the fact that they got it on their home addresses that are out of state. So this seems to be an issue as far as totally unlicensed units. How are they catching that? Then the second thing I want to say is licensing is important and you have to understand it at the state level on down. As as a property manager, real rental manager or an agent, I can have my individual owner license the property, which is what I do because I want those owners held accountable, whether it's me that rents for me. If Kay got hit by a bus in the new Promenade parking lot, the new agent has to be held accountable too because they're licensed individually that way. However, you can hold a collective license in the state of Florida, and those can be all over everywhere, and they're considered a hospitality license. Those people are not on the Pro Champs list. And those people have ads that are one in two days. So I've come to the conclusion that with Pro Champs, and y'all, I'm a follow the rules kind of woman. I have been my whole life. I'm beginning to think that's not what you do because I'm getting dinged on this. I'm getting owners calling me. I'm getting people in condominium complexes because I'm a cam calling me. They're they're getting getting dinged by Pro Champs with courtesy letters and things like this. But they took the proactive approach to go get a license and try to be in compliance. We have people that are absolutely unlicensed with nothing occurring to them whatsoever. So I'm I'm growing to the conclusion that if I just do business under the table with my rentals, I'm not going to get caught. And that's not good because this is supposed to be taking care of residents, residential areas where these people are going in and out, in and out, making noise, traffic, parking, and even in my neighborhood. We have one that was there one night screaming they were going to burn the place down and drunk. Yeah, so it's not totally eliminating our situation.
And let me just pause there. You'd let it go over a little bit because I think you did have two issues, but we are going to hear from Pro Champs tonight. And I know I need to meet with you. I owe you. You had sent some emails explaining this, but I think we should probably listen to Pro Champs and then come back. And 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 let's try to iron this out because I think you have some valid concerns that we need to work through.
Sure that you're aware of these things that I'm finding because if the council and the city employees are not aware, you're not going to know whether it's going to happen on the backside with software implementation correctly. And it's costing me a lot of time and money right now. And I've talked to an owner today that said I have two properties in Cape Canaveral. I'm going to sell them and I'm going to move by two properties in Cocoa Beach. So if you want to run every small business out of here, we need to keep heading the direction we're going. We've got ones over there with a problem. We've got people that are renting and trying to follow the rules and a problem, but the ones that aren't going by the rules are just held their filter, doing what they want. So I'm just trying to give you feedback to the council so I can help you guys with this.
Thank you.
Failures happening.
We want to get this right. And, oh, yes, please.
I just want to know, you said this about this hospitality license? So could you explain that to me, please?
That's a collective condominium license. And I can be licensed as the agent, my company, and sign those units on. And then I list those units under my license, but it's literally literally under my company. And it's considered after a certain amount, it's considered a hospitality license. So I go through the hotel division with some of my rules for that instead of the D V P R condominium, mobile home and all of that vision. So what we've got these gaping holes. It's creating a property nightmare for investor owners and others that live here and own properties that are rentals. And these holes are not being filled. And meanwhile, the ones of us that are licensed, and I'm truly trying to go by the rules, but I'm like, oh, my gosh, I can't do it. I've got people, my owners calling me every day. They're getting letters. They're getting this, they're getting that. And meanwhile, the transient properties, they're just churning and burning them through here, and y'all don't even know it.
Okay, I got a I got a telephone call about this business too with the guest services. I have to talk to you about, talk, we'll have to talk about this. Thank you.
There's obviously some kinks. I mean, this was, we voted this contract in before October. It went into effect October one. And we've had this for these reasons on every council agenda because we know we need to keep it in front of us and we want to make this work and staffs and Pro Champs is working together. And tonight we have it as a point of information. I think we're going to get some sort of update as well. But thank you so much for your help. I do need to.
If I didn't make it to the update, I wanted to make sure you had this feedback.
Thank you.
Know what I'm written into because it's been a nightmare.
I'm not an end user like you, and so you're, it's very valuable. Thank you very much, Kay. All right, and Ms. Kim Risenka, please. Is that? Okay, got it. Thank you very much. That concludes the cards. Deputy City Clerk, Daniel, do you have anyone online?
Yes, sir. Mr. Raymond Osborne has his hand raised.
Hey, Ray.
Mr. Osborne, you're live. You have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. Thank you for letting me talk for a few minutes. I've been making some interesting observations. I really enjoy our community and always look around for an area that might need improvement. And I've been to a beach a couple of times and I noticed how scruffy, you know, a lot of garbage on the beach, you know, there's like empty water bottles and things of that nature. So I got to actually going over there and wearing a pair of gloves and started picking them up and throwing them away and meeting other people along the way. In fact, I've had some nice compliments with some of the tourists thanking me for actually picking stuff off the beach. So I decided to do a little research on this, even though we got a problem, there's a solution to it. And I think it could be a good opportunity for the city if they want to avail themselves of it. And I talked to the director, the executive director of Keep Brevard Beautiful. And they have some really good resources there. They have like an app. And they get teams of people together. In fact, there's Adopt a Shore by Hot Yoga, I think, out of Cherry Down Park. And they get these big mass groups and they get, they pick up a lot of the rubbish of the, as we say in England, off the beach, you know, like these water bottles and things of that nature. And but the bashes are like big groups and they're like the big groups are good for like maybe a couple of weeks on one part of the beach, but then the things get scruffy again and more garbage. So my thoughts are is that we could have something continuous, like solo, you know, with the pandemic and everything, everybody's avoiding social, you know, using social distancing and, you know, good, good habits in that way, and they tend to go out by themselves. So I'm adopting a program which will be like, people could go out solo and duo and pairs and clean up beaches and then be able to upload their data into Keep Brevard Beautiful or something else, you know. And so I wanted to challenge the city on this, and I've looked at some of the history of the city in the past, you know, they've been with Keep Brevard Beautiful. I was looking at the twenty twenty-one resilient program project, and I know they were quite involved with that with one of the bashes there. But just want to throw that out to the city, you know, maybe we could do something where we can encourage individuals, our couples to go out to the beach and do a clean, do a cleanup while they're there at the beach and upload the data and then maybe put some kind of incentive or recognition for them. I know that's pretty big, you know, and download the data and put it into a newsletter. So I'm really just kind of throwing that out there. And I know that now Keep Brevard Beautiful has some good resources that we could utilize. Maybe they've been something done in the past. So just throwing that out there and see if there's any interest with it at all, you know, maybe a city department or something of that nature. Any thoughts?
Thank you very much, Ray. I love a lot of those ideas and I think that we need to take the next step and and work together to make that possible. So. Okay, Daniel, anymore?
No, sir, not this time.
Great. That concludes the public comments portion of our meeting. I believe I just got a couple more, but they're for specific items. So at this time, we are going to, we've just got a few presentations and interviews. The first one is interview applicant for the appointment to the Culture and Leisure Services Board, Mr. Mike Truitt. Mike, are you here tonight? If you don't mind, come on up. Thank you. Welcome. I can, once council gets to this agenda item, we've anybody has any questions for Mike, the interview, welcome. Thank you so much. I'll kick us off here and say we want to appreciate you for taking the time out of your busy week and schedule and trying to give back to the community. We know it's, it's, you know, kind of hard to step out and to do it. And I saw the ranking of the items and it looks like you are this is an opportunity that you feel that you'll fit well for. And maybe just tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Mike Truitt. I live in two two one Jefferson Avenue. I am originally from Orlando. I am uh, originally from Orlando, but I uh, I'm a full sail grad. Uh, I left uh, five years ago to go out to LA and uh, got China a little bit transformed into uh, what is reality and what's not. And I was able to come back because of COVID and uh, I decided to settle here and it's so beautiful, like this place is great, I love it. Uh, I love uh, doing things with um, leisure services. I'm hiring uh, for the city. Uh, I enjoy helping out in the community. Um, I'm a server, you know, I love to serve, uh, ex fireman, ex EMT. I like to grind, I like to do things, I like to be proactive. I'm the guy you come to that you need help with, so.
Thank you so much. I'm going to let each council member kind of go down and see if they have any questions for you. Thank you.
I think you would definitely be an asset and that you would be totally involved with this. So I think it would, I think you'd be great.
Thank you, I second it.
I brought Tim Kellum.
Run the city and do the right things for everybody. So thank you for uh, coming, coming and being part of our city.
Councilmember Willis, can you hear us?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Truitt, for coming back to Florida. And uh, we really appreciate your willingness to serve and thank you very much.
Thank you and uh, know you'll do a good job, keep in touch if you ever need anything. This council is always available and we want to learn about what you're working on and what your ideas are and what you're doing within that world. So I think your two thumbs up and uh, best of luck to you. Please.
Because he's been great.
Awesome. Yes.
So much support for him, that's why I want to thank him.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Yes. Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. There's a couple perfunctory questions the city attorney typically asks of applicants when we interview.
I take full responsibility for that. Mr. Truitt? That, I thought we had did this last time.
We just wanted to see how fast you could come back. Um, just, it's a, it's a perfunctory question I always ask all applicants. Just all of the information in your application is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Knowing that, this time um, we are going to move on to a presentation to the Financial Services Department, something that I think we should all be very proud of. Uh, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year Ending September 30th, 2020. And so at this time, um, I would like to just briefly go over the, the summary and what's happening here. This is a presentation. Oh, I'm off one there. This is uh, the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, has recognized the Financial Services Department for Excellence in Financial Reporting by awarding their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, C-A-F-R. Their Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And so uh, this is the 25th, 25th consecutive year that the City of Cape Canaveral Financial Services Department has received this prestigious award for excellence in financial reporting. And this word exemplifies dedication, knowledge and professionalism of the Financial Services Department staff. And with that, we are lucky enough to have our Financial Services Department Director, Mr. John Delaio here, and I'm going to head down and uh, present you with the award. Thank you. Congratulations, thank you. This is heavier than it looks.
Yeah, this will kill somebody.
And this is uh, this certificate here, so. Congratulations, give a round of applause for John. Do you want to take it? Thank you, John, do you want to say a few words?
I just want to say a few words. This just shows the extraordinary efforts of a team that has to always get it right. They do get it right and my team of uh, Cheryl, Jenny, Carrie, it's, it's extraordinary. I mean, there was no right option in this pod. It means that we're protect, we're doing everything to protect your money and to take all the right steps. And um, it's very, sometimes it's very difficult. But we put this as our number one priority, compared to many other companies that spend it in the city. And our record shows it. And um, so they know, uh, today, I know if Congress is finished up 2021, uh, it's odd, so hopefully we'll compete. For extraordinary, and this stuff can have been taken for granted, so I did feel blessed that I got such good points.
Thank you. All right. Congratulations. I know this council is very proud of that, 25 years in a row. And the final presentation here uh, is a proclamation declaring the week, this first week of February, the first week of February 2022 as Sustainability Week in the City of Cape Canaveral. Uh, we are presenting this to our Community and Economic Development Deputy Director and Sustainability Manager, Mr. Zachary Eicholtz. Zach, are you here tonight? Okay, that's good. Um, I am happy to uh, bring this proclamation down. I just want to make sure that the official one is up here. Or was that left? Or do you want me to just read off the summary sheet? Okay, you got it. There we go. And this doesn't. There was a, a reward or a award there? Did I miss that? Think of it, we're good. All right. I have it. Yes, I have it. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the City of Cape Canaveral, surrounding natural environment, the ecosystem and unique beauty it affords are the foundation of our community. And whereas the planet's environment is currently facing numerous perils from human related activities that must be addressed, including a loss of biodiversity, excessive waste, extreme weather, ocean acidification and sea level rise. And whereas these threats are also impacting local ecosystems such as the fragile Indian River Lagoon in the Atlantic Ocean and risk the socio-economic prosperity of residents and business owners. And whereas the 2016 Indian River Lagoon Economic Valuation Update provided by the East Coast Florida Regional Planning Council and the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council estimated the total annual impact output of the lagoon in 2014 was well over $7 billion. Helps to employ tens of thousands of local residents and is home to thousands of species. And whereas according to a 2018 report by the National Institute of Building Services, for every $1 spent on disaster resiliency based mitigation projects such as improving stormwater management systems or strengthening buildings against flooding, an average of $6 is saved on future relief costs. And whereas according to a 2019 report from the Coalition of Urban Transitions, it is estimated that investment in low carbon technologies and measures to reduce environmental impacts within cities could cut global urban pollutant emissions by 90% by 2050 and would save 24 trillion. And whereas the City of Cape Canaveral is committed to the preservation of our environment and the actively implementing common sense solutions to address environmental, economic and public needs, challenges and opportunities. And whereas mirroring the innovative push of the early American space program, the City of Cape Canaveral will lead by example in becoming a role model for coastal municipalities across the nation and the world as it utilizes the latest in green design, technology and clean energy to mitigate climate related risks and become future ready. And whereas the City of Cape Canaveral will continue to support and expand initiatives that enhance sustainability and resiliency in order to improve the safety, security and wellbeing of the residents both now and the, in the future. Now therefore, I Wes Morrison, Mayor of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim the first full week of February 22 as Sustainability Week in the City of Cape Canaveral to encourage environmental awareness, outreach and stewardship among residents, businesses, owners and visitors. So congratulations, thank you. I don't have it. You got it. I needed that. Thank you. You.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for all you do. Please. Yes.
You know, I, I was able to listen in on the visioning workshop that we had last week that the, the council requested. One of the, my takeaways from that was the residents' love of their city and the beauty of our city and the importance of the environment of our city. That's one of the things that attracted so many of you to, to Cape Canaveral. And we're very fortunate to have a council that maintaining that, protecting that is important. And we're also very fortunate that this council and our city manager have made this a priority to a point where they've actually, um, we have a position, Zach Eicholtz, and I'm sure most of you know Zach, how committed he is and how dedicated he is. We're in very good hands with Zach and our council. And so uh, these are not just words on a proclamation that gets tossed in some book after we read this this evening. Uh, this is going to be a, um, this is a really Zach's mission statement and he's going to aggressively implement this and, and make sure that this, this important part of Cape Canaveral was protected and preserved. So uh, anyways, thank, thank you for the support and uh, thank you for the support.
Thank you. That's the one thing this council has consistently locked arms on is we've really had great unity on making the right investments and having the right team, as Dave said, to help lead and that, we work well in that sphere. Living on an island, it's very important to all of us. So thank you very much. I'm excited about the future and implementing some of those plans. City manager, any comments or?
I'm grateful for the unity also.
So I have to say that we're going to have the COs planning too that first week as part of the sustainability. So I do have to say that. We might as well plug it in now. And I think we have a good sys, Zach has worked out a really good system that we're going to have people standing on each street so that we'll have some really good solid direction this year. Thank you. Keep that in mind, I think it's the first Saturday.
Thank you. All right, at this time, just to kind of give us a glimpse in the future, we've got our consent agenda. We're gonna um, then remove item number two, we'll need a motion to do that. And I am gonna um, make a request to, to change the, the order on a couple of these items. Uh, but let's go ahead and move with the consent agenda. Is everyone okay with it, which is one of the first times I think we've ever seen just one item here. Um, approved minutes for December 7th, 2021? Anyone would like to pull it?
And December, and December 21st, they're both in there.
Thank you very much. We're approving the, the December 7th, 2021 and the December 21st, 2021 council meeting, the special meeting and the regular one. Councilmember Willis, are you okay with those?
I'm perfectly all right with them.
Okay. Looking for a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we adopt the consent agenda for December 7th, 2021 and December 21st, 2021.
I'll second it.
All right, you got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by the mayor for Tim Kellum or? City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis? Four. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum? Four. Mayor Morrison? Four. Councilmember Raymond? Four. Councilmember Willis? Four.
Okay. Before we go into the public hearings, um, I know that the, the, I don't see him here. Are we fir, are we going to? Pause, um, yes, if you don't mind. And in the meantime, we need to, I need a motion to remove item number two, correct?
Yes.
Ordinance number 01, 2022, that's no longer relevant.
So um, I'll, I'll make a motion to remove ordinance number 01, 2022.
Got a motion by Councilmember Raymond and a second by Councilmember Davis to remove ordinance number 01, 2022, which is item number two under the public hearings of the agenda. Any discussion? No. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis? Four. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum? Four. Mayor Morrison? Four. Councilmember Raymond? Four. Councilmember Willis? Four.
Excellent. So at this time, we're waiting on them. I, the next thing I'd like to rearrange and move is, I think, um, before we get in these public hearings, staff, um, I was talking with our city attorney or city manager, remember? Would like to give a general overview of these, is that correct and explain it for us?
The pro champs item?
Oh, he's back, I was, so before we go into that, we have a point of information. Which is the pro champs item. What number is that? That is number 13. He has driven over and would like to take maybe just a few minutes to give us an update and then we'll be able to, to move on to the public hearing. So please, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, city manager, Scott Blasey with Pro Champs. Uh, real quick background, I'm a retired co-director of 27 years. Uh, been with Pro Champs since 2011 and Boyne Beach where I worked was the second partner with Pro Champs. All that aside, that means I'm old. But I met with staff last week, uh, met with Todd, David and uh, Mr. Palmer. And uh, the stark reality is, is we're not to where we expected to be at this point in time in terms of getting the registrations. Uh, we're doing pretty well in the identification. Uh, we're doing pretty well in the registration part. But the seven day booking minimum uh, provided some, some technology hurdles that uh, quite frankly, uh, the folks that were before you last September-ish uh, weren't up to speed with in terms of getting, getting ahead of that. Uh, I wasn't here then, I wasn't involved then. I went through, I told Todd, I feel like I got a master's degree in uh, Cape Canaveral short term rental because I went through all YouTube videos, listened to all the comments, all the public input, all the input and comments that you folks made. And uh, I was just outside speaking, I forget the, the person's name. Uh, but I've recruited her to help us make sure that we're delivering the best product possible for staff. Uh, we did have some issues with evidence. Uh, we do have a hot room full of violations, but without the proper evidence, uh, obviously staff can't go forward and attempt to prosecute anybody for violating the ordinance. I took it right to the executive team after meeting with the city manager and his team. And we have our general counsel involved in terms of the evidentiary process. Uh, presented some documents today while I was driving up. Stopped, of course, uh, that I think is a huge step in the right direction. But I'll be the first one to sit here and tell you after what I heard from when you were presented to and. and the expectations that the city had. We weren't there. And I'm here to tell you, basically throw myself on the mercy of the court tonight and tell you that we're committed to providing everything you need to have the ordinance working as it should. And the folks that are in compliance with the laws should feel a lot better in the fact that the person, the people that aren't are going to be taken care of. And I apologize for what happened in the past. Again, I wasn't part of that. And all I can do is apologize for it. And my job is to make sure that you folks are getting exactly what you want out of it. And I just had a nice conversation with her outside. She's obviously a professional and expert in her field. I learned she's also a great technology-driven, and that's her background. So I'm hoping that if we have citizens that feel like something's not right, I think we need to get together and understand what those things are. And we feel we're doing well in two out of three of the criteria. We're identifying them. We're gathering evidence. The trick is right now to make sure we get the evidence in a form that's acceptable to your city attorney and your staff to go forward. And we're just gonna keep going with the blessing of the council. But I wanted to come up here and do that in person. Todd and I both agree that that's the best way to do things. And COVID's kind of killed that, and it's good to be out on the road again and being here in person. I'm willing to take questions. I can't answer too much in the technology area. But I'll do my best if I can't get answers to get them for you or answer any other questions.
So we bumped and, which was item number twelve, so that he could give the information. But if you have questions specifically for Scott, now would be the time. Otherwise, we can't take this issue up at the end. But to utilize his time, I don't think he's gonna stay around. So.
No, I would just like to say, this is a very important issue to all our citizens in our, in our city. And, you know, it's a matter of saving our neighborhoods and, and trying to live together with the short-term rental. So, you know, I understand there were some problems in the beginning. Hopefully, they'll all be straightened out. And thank you for coming up and, and admitting that you got some bumps in the road and, and you're on board with getting it all straightened out. So I thank you for that, and thank you for driving up here.
I wish I got here earlier because I hadn't been to Cape Canaveral before. I need to get back up here. And I just saw the rocket go off, so I got.
Thank you. Any other questions for Scott? Counsel, Councilmember Willis, any questions for Scott? It was just an information item to give us an update.
No questions, but I appreciate his willingness to stand before council and, and own up to any deficiencies in the program. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, we're committed to making it work, and we're very appreciative of the city's patience and making sure we get through this. And I want David to be able to sleep tonight. Everybody else will get there. I'll leave some cards here. If anybody has any questions to come to mind, shoot me an email. I'm working all the time. Can only play someone's job. That's not happening.
And I've got one, but thank you. And the fact that Ms. Kay Jackson had reached out to me a couple of times, and that's why I said I need to, to, to get back with her and to meet, she had some valid issues that were, that were raised. And to be honest, with everything going on, it was a little overwhelming at the time. And I'm thinking, wow, those are big issues. And the fact that you're willing to meet with her and connect and try to figure it out, I think, is, is excellent. I, I want to learn and support. We knew there would be challenges with this, and we'll, we'll get them figured out. So thank you again.
I appreciate it. Thanks for getting me home by midnight.
Yes, sir. Have a good night and safe travels to you. All right, counsel. So at this time, we're gonna head into the public hearings portion of the agenda. I'm gonna give it over to our city manager for a brief overview, but I would like to make a request. These are items three through nine that, if we can move item number eight when we're ready to take these up, if we can do, do eight in front of item number three. So essentially, number eight would be the first one we'd take up. Is council okay with that? We got some people here tonight and trying to get them home as well. So, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second phase of a large rezoning effort that the community and Economic Development Department has been undergoing for the last several months. The first phase involved city-owned properties. And as you may recall, the process is when the future land use map and the zoning map both need to be changed. They, like they do in this case, we have to handle both of those. So there's an A and a B to every one of these. A is the future land use map, and B is the zoning map. So in every case, what we're doing is, is changing both of those in that order. It involves a number of properties that are multifamily. There's a one or two that are smaller than that. But this has to do with the North Atlantic Avenue, which was the original State Road four-oh-one, which was the road that they used to get up to the Cape area before the port was dredged, before five-twenty-eight was here. This section of the road, however, this portion north of the split there, it was, was, was orphaned when Astronaut Boulevard was put in and the port was there. And five-twenty-eight, all the commercial interests went there to Astronaut Boulevard. And the commercial interests were very few over the years since then on this orphaned stretch of North Atlantic Avenue. So we had a lot of properties since then. Of course, that was the sixties and early seventies when it happened. There's a lot of properties that were undeveloped, and there was, the city dealt with some pressure for some residential development there. Well, they were left with, these are commercial properties. How do you build residential there? Well, the city's solution at the time was to do something called a special exception. Special exception was a case-by-case basis. A C-one lot could become R-two for purposes of building residential structure there. Go forward through several decades, we've got several dozens of houses on individual lots. And we've got entire subdivisions that were created and all told, hundreds of homes that were approved by special exception that way. A few years ago, the city council in its wisdom decided that special exceptions were not really the way to, to continue to preserve property rights, that what would happen if a property burned down or blew over in a hurricane, there's not a guaranteed vesting of a right to rebuild to residential. So for that reason, it was assigned to the Community Economic Development Department to protect the property interests here. And actually, let's rezone them and change those future land use maps to protect all those residential property owners and their interests there for the future. So this is making something right. It's been a heavy lift. It's been several months in the making. So I'll let Dave describe it from here, but the process was followed. We didn't have any objections until I learned of one today. And it's not really a super strong objection. It's really, can you hold off a little bit? I think we're gonna hear that for item number eight. Dave, what would you like to add to that?
Yeah, no, I think, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I think that was very, very good overview. And I apologize if you did mention this, but I think the one thing that really brought this to a head was some of our residents were facing an issue with their properties when, as Todd described, when we, when the city removed residential as a special exception in the C-one district, all of those existing residential properties that had been approved through the special exception process became legal non-conforming properties. And being labeled a non-conforming property, although there's certain rights associated with that, there's certain things that, that are, that cloud, I'll say cloud that property. And so to get rid of that cloud, and that cloud can become an issue, say, as an example, if a individual is wanting to get an appraisal on their property or if they want to sell, if they're selling a property or refinancing, that cloud, if you will, can, can potentially cause problems. And so to clear that up, that was, that's, that was one of the big impetus here to, to get this moving. But other than that, I think I really don't have anything to add to what Todd said.
It's about protecting those property owners' residential interests. And Mayor, with that overview, if you'd like to move on to item eight. And Dave, you want to open this one up? Mayor, if you're ready.
We are. I don't think we need a motion to move the agenda item around.
If we do, we'll probably need to do that first.
No, no, we can, we can move, we can move that up.
Okay.
It's all part of the.
Everyone's okay. We'll start with number eight.
And I'd like Dave to introduce it, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dickey.
Yes. Okay. Did you, do you want me to read the ordinance into, how did you want to handle this?
The city attorney will read the ordinance.
Just, just a general, this particular, these particular ordinances, number twenty-three and number twenty-four are related to the Oak Lane properties that we're all very familiar with. If you may or may not know, this, this entire area to include all of the built-out residential structures are zone C-one. And obviously, and this will be similar to a number of, of the issues tonight. Most, most of the cases that we're gonna be hearing tonight are larger tracts of land that were, that are built out. And that, that was really the kind of the common theme that ties all of these properties together that the council's gonna be considering tonight. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Anthony.
Thank you, Dave. Before that, Daniel, could you pull up the maps that are related to these items? There are attachments. So item eight attachment. Thank you. Anthony?
Okay, so the year, the subject property that we're dealing with for, for these two ordinances is highlighted in yellow. For each of the, each of the properties that we're gonna go through, there are two ordinances. The first ordinance is a proposed amendment to the future land use map. And then the second ordinance will be a proposed rezoning of the property, changing the zoning designation. So I'm gonna go ahead and read in both ordinances by title for the subject area. And then you can go ahead and take public hearing on, on the two ordinances. And then I would ask that the council then vote on each ordinance separately to try to move things, move things along. So the first ordinance is ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-one. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of multiple parcels of real property located along the north and south side and end of Oak Lane and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here, too, from C-one commercial to R-two residential, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The second ordinance is ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-twenty-one. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida adopting a city-initiated rezoning of several parcels of property located along the north and south side and end of Oak Lane from their respective current city C-one low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city R-two medium-density residential zoning designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. This is first reading of both these ordinances and they're subject to public hearing item. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. This time, council will be able to ring it back. I've got a card here from Ms. Kim Razanka on item number eight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Kim Razanka. I am with the law firm of Lacy Lyons Razanka at the Rockledge office. I'm here tonight representing Don Haynes as trustee of the Cadet L. Haynes Trust. Trust is the owner of the property at one forty-three Oak Lane, Cape Canaveral, Florida, and is subject to both of these ordinance. I'm Don Haynes is here with me as well. This property I have before you, just to give you background information, this property was purchased by the Haynes in two thousand and three and then turned into their trust in two thousand and ten. So they've owned it quite a while. It's been an investment for them. It's been zone commercial the entire time he's owned it, they have owned it. Mr. Haynes and Ms. Haynes, on behalf of the trust, they object to the change of the future land use and the change of the zoning. It is a vacant parcel. It does have a house on it. It's condemned by the city. So it is a vacant piece of commercial property. It's a little different than the other categories that are residential that got there by special exception. And he has always intended to develop a commercial perhaps as a mixed use. It's in the economic, I always get this wrong, E-O-O-D. And it is, so he can do a lot with this property as commercial. It does no good to be in the E-O-O-D if it's residential, at least from how I read your code. And so as a C-one low-density, he could do mixed use, he could do an ALF, he could do lots of different things. He could put a bottom of small businesses, ITech, hairdressers, and then put some residential on top. He could do different things. So as I said, this is on one forty-three Oak Lane, Cape Canaveral. And to keep it simple, we've just asked that this property be taken out of these two ordinances. It is up for sale right now. His realtor has listed for three million dollars. And it's listed by ordinance as one forty-three Oak Lane. It's not one of the parcel IDs, which I would guess are also vacant. So I have on page three, it is the property, it's the big block at the end. As you will note, the property to the west is industrial, and it's warehouses. You do have some other vacant lots on Oak Lane. They need to have commercial at the front. You have what appears to be some rental property. You have some really old houses along here as well. I would argue that you're stopping them from being able to redevelop and put it in, Phil, but they're not here to argue that, but they're really old homes that need to be redeveloped. I turn to page four. I was not able to find your, I'm sure, recently adopted property, property, private property rights element. But I did want to say that we think that this violates whatever you did adopt, because I'm pretty sure you did what every other city did and just adopt the statutory language. Maybe you didn't, and I apologize if I'm wrong, but I couldn't find it on your website. So this would affect the trust's right to physically possess and control the interest on the property and the owner to use, maintain, and develop, and the investment back expectations when they purchased the property in two thousand and three. This is not a non-conforming lot. This is a conforming lot in C-one. There's no cloud on this title. He has an appraisal on here. It did not, there's, there's no problem with his appraisal. This current use actually makes sense from my knowledge as the land use attorney for twenty years because it's actually a buffer between the residential use and the industrial uses to the west. So this makes sense to keep it as commercial. I do want to show you, and again, this is not something I would need to go through normally, but on page five is what you have now, that's your future land use. And I couldn't find that anywhere in your package of what it's going to look like when you're done with all these ordinances. But I did find it on your website, the two thousand and nineteen for zoning map. So I know you've been looking at this for a long time, but you're kind of creating a patchwork. And so you're going to have, if you leave this commercial zone and commercial future land use, that little X is where this property is, and it's already a patchwork. So it's not gonna be inconsistent with what you're creating by adopting all these ordinances. I would ask also to, if you look at your staff report, it's somewhat generic for all the properties, and this property is indeed different because it's vacant. The character of the undeveloped land is vacant. It's not residential. That's number one, or number two. Number three talks about the minimum amount of land needed to achieve the goals and requirements of comprehensive plan. Says the subject property is built out. This one is not built out. This actually responses, is not really responsive to this comp plan criteria or the actual statutory criteria. And then paragraph four says the subject parcel is within an established neighborhood and does not represent urban sprawl. Again, it's not a, it's not a flat. It's not a subdivision. It's somewhat piecemeal. Those four houses that are next to this, near to the east, have been built since two thousand and fifteen. So they kind of knew what they were doing. One was built in two thousand and eighteen. I'm assuming the special exception was purchased, or was purchased, I apologize, was procured before that. So actually, as, as we've said, we'd ask that you take one forty-three Oak Lane out of these two ordinances. Uh, and all their alternative would be not to approve this ordinance at all. Um, this is the city that's trying to fix issues for property owners. And maybe these property owners intend to redevelop. It's, it's unknown. They're not here. Um, the other thing is to change your C one ordinance to allow residential. And to keep this in the future, it could be developed commercial. It's hard to go from residential to commercial. It's much easier to go from commercial to residential. Um, Brevard County allows residential by right in B U one, which is similar to C one. And the city of Melbourne also allows residential in, um, in, in commercial properties, if not unusual. So you could consider doing that as well, instead of just doing this to seven hundred personal owners that aren't here to represent themselves. Um, with that, um, Mr. Haynes, um, as trustee, he did not create these zoning inconsistencies. It is not inconsistent on his property because it's a vacant commercial property. And he, uh, does not wish, on behalf of the trust, have this changed. And with that, um, we can take any questions. Mr. Haynes can answer questions. He's owned this for a long time and anticipated this to be commercial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So to, to be clear, the request is to remove the site address one forty-three Oak Lane, Cape Canaveral as, as an option. And or, uh, you know, the other options you laid out, keep it as residential or add residential as a use. Um, but I think your primary request is the first one, just
Correct. I was just giving you options if you were comfortable creating more of a patchwork.
Okay. Now, that makes sense, counsel. Um, do we have any questions for Ms. Razanka?
Just, I want to clarify, please. You want to keep one forty-three Oak Lane, C one.
Yes, ma'am.
Commercial.
Correct.
Not residential.
Right.
Doesn't want, they don't want.
Change your C one ordinance, text ordinance, if you wanted to, to allow residential and commercial. That's all. I was giving you options in case you didn't want to piecemeal this.
You just, only that one parcel, one forty-three Oak Lane. Okay, thank you. That's what I understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anything from city staff?
I just would ask Anthony to step us through the process of removing, extracting this one lot from this ordinance. Um, and can the rest of the ordinance be approved tonight with that extraction? If council chooses to go that way?
Yes, we just removed the, um, property from the, from the exhibit. Um, Brenda would have to then change the map to remove the parcel from the map. And then prior to second reading, we'd also would, uh, modify the title. But, um, because I think it refers to the end of Oak Lane as well. So it's something that can be done. You can remove the property, um, at the request of the property owner, if that's your desire. Um, this is an administrative, um, comp plan proposed change as well as an administrative rezoning change that's being initiated by the city.
So the, the motion we can bring back for discussion would be to approve it with the removal of one forty-three Oak Lane and the parcel. Is one forty-three Oak Lane sufficient, or would you, do we need to write the parcel number?
No, that's, that's sufficient, and we'll, we'll go ahead and clean up the, the ordinance for, before second and final reading.
For Tim Kellum?
Um, yeah, I just have a, a couple of questions. Um, I initiated the, uh, talks with the people on Oak Lane about paving. And the residents came and spoke on that. I also spoke to you. My concern is there's only one way in and out of this uh, to your piece of property. If it's zone commercial and you put, uh, restaurants, businesses, whatever, in the commercial zone, the only way to get to the, would be through these people's neighborhoods. Um, what the difference between residential, um, if you would, because you had talked about doing something maybe like ocean gardens in that, in that area. Uh, if we zoned it, I, I just feel, you know, the people along there don't want a one-way-in, one-way-out with their children in the streets and businesses down the end there. Um, that's my concern if we changed it. And, and then with Anthony, the property rights, uh, that we talked about and we amended, does that have a lot to do with this?
I mean, the, the city did adopt the property rights com- comprehensive plan amendment, the minimum required by statute. So, I mean, and we'll agree to disagree on the, the position, I guess, that's being taken regarding violation of that. But, you know, I think the, uh, the operative question is, you know, what, what does the city council want to do regarding this property, um, comp plan designation and zoning designation? Um, there was some discussion at the planning and zoning board. I think as you alluded to, that, you know, the, the property owner or trustee um, has had some ideas of doing a residential development years ago on the property and shared with the planning and zoning board, I think, uh, old depiction that was drawn up on a cocktail napkin. Um, you know, what becomes of the property, whether it's commercial or, um, you know, becomes residential, I guess the market would tell. Um, and I just want to also address, I'm sure Davis, I think, chomping at the bit. Um, you know, there was a suggestion made that perhaps you can just, uh, list residential as a com- as a, as a permitted use and commercial. I mean, this is the cause and reason why the city is doing what it's doing right now. It's because over the years, the city, um, approved residential uses in commercial areas that created all sorts of zoning conflicts. So, you know, the city is trying to, trying to deal with, with that situation the best it can. Um, you know, making residential a permitted use in commercial would probably put you right back in the same position, maybe even a worse position than when the city approved many special exceptions over the years that caused a lot of conflicts on the zoning map. So my two cents.
It was just another word, name for special exception.
Well, special exceptions, yeah, well, special exceptions actually under the commer- under the commercial zoning designation years ago, they were done, you know, piecemeal case-by-case basis. If you would open up all of commercial for residential, you would be creating that problem as a matter of right, rather than, you know, one, one property at, at a time. It just would put you back in time to a situation that caused, uh, a lot of inconsistencies and angst over the years, right, Dave? I hope I'm not speaking out of term, you know, the planner, but, um, we're trying to fix, trying to fix a problem um, for a lot of property owners, as Dave alluded to, because of special exceptions that were granted in commercial zones years ago.
Okay. And I think, um, you know, with us trying to get Oak Lane on the budget and surveying and getting the, uh, residents along there to agree to sidewalks and all, is, will that cha- changing that end, will that affect anything along the, the surveys or the, or the paving that we are working on? Will it change?
I couldn't answer that. The, the, the road work that we're talking about doing, um, would not be on this property. It, it would serve this property, but it wouldn't be on this property. Uh, any of the surveys that we've done, we, no lines were adjusted that affected this property. The only thing that I would suggest is that, uh, we make the, if, if council does do this tonight and extracts this and approves it at first reading, that we go the extra mile of making sure every owner of property on Oak Lane knows what happened tonight, so they have input for the second reading.
Yeah.
Your face was priceless.
Yeah. This, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I, I just want to, and Anthony was correct. I mean, the, the big issue we're trying to deal here with here is, is getting, we, we've got a compatibility issue. We've got residential and commercial kind of all mishmashed together. We're trying, we're trying to address that. And, um, I, I will say this, and we did bring this up at the P and Z meeting, is that I'm not sure even if the council or the trustee keeps the C one zoning, if that's what the council ultimately decides to do this evening, that commercial can be built on this property. And I, and I say this be- because of this, is that the council may recall that several years ago, we went in and we changed the criteria for our site plan process. Anthony added some new language to the site plan process, more considerations and criteria that the planning and zoning board need to, need to keep in mind. And one of them was compatibility. So in this piece of property, if, let's just say it stays commercial and it, and, and, um, the, the owner, the trustee wants to put a commercial project on this property, it's going to have to go through the site plan process. And one of the things that will be looked at will be compatibility with surrounding properties. And so I'm not saying, I'm not going to presuppose what that analysis will, will conclude, but I'm just saying that compatibility, uh, is going to be something that is going to have to be addressed by the trustee or the developer on this property, should a commercial project be, be proposed on it, so. Okay. Um, I think we we've, we understand what, what needs to happen. I think that we've heard the the property owner's side. Mr. Zanka, do you have some more comments?
I do, please. A bit rebuttal. Um, I, I'm actually kind of surprised that there's so much resistance to this, because this isn't something he created or the trustee created, and he's had it a long time. This was created by the cities, these apparent inco- compatibilities. There are provisions in your code for buffering and fencing and things between commercial and residential. And now you're creating even, you know, if you make this residential, this three-acre parcel, you're creating even bigger incompatibility with the industrial to the west. So, and, and regarding the site plan issue, that's in, perhaps internal inconsistency in your code. Site plan is much more rigid and ministerial than zoning. This property has commercial zoning. We just don't want it changed. It's not fair for it to be changed at this point. It may be because he has it for sale right now. The value is much higher as commercial. It may be it doesn't sell. He comes back and says, sorry, I need R two or R three, or I need something else. Um, but it's, you know, he does have site plan challenges with setback, even if you already do multifamily. So there are those issues, but site plan criteria, site plans always come after zoning. And that's every time we're zoning, well, we'll deal with that at site plan, where we have to deal with drainage and retention and things like that. So I don't know what your site plan code says, but that's something that has to be dealt with in compatibility, as you know, is in the eye of the beholder, and you create compatibility by putting up fences and landscaping. So I don't ask that you consider what might have to come in the future, just if you could leave him as commercial right now. Or, you know, if you have to downzone it, downzone to an R three. That's not what I'm recommending. That's just what he said to me. Um, but it is definitely a downzoning without his consent, without his permission, without him creating the problem. So we would ask that you take that out of these two ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Since, since Brenda Supernat has worked on this, I was just wondering if we should consult with her? Or, I mean, I know that you're her supervisor.
Do you have a specific question?
Hmm, I was just thinking. Uh, no, I know that she's been working on this, so I was just curious.
Curious of, of
I just was curious what she would think about taking this one forty-three Oak Lane out. That's all.
I, I
That was just a question. And I, I, I heard what you had to say.
Yeah, and, and I want to, I, I want to be clear. I, I wasn't, I wasn't speaking against the council taking out this piece of property or, or keeping it in. I just want the, uh, the process and the facts known, so the council can make a decision. I wasn't arguing one way or the other. And, um, and all I will say is, I, I'm, I was, I, we have, Brenda and I and Anthony, we have been aware of the trustee's concerns. And Todd, we've all been, we've, we've all had numerous conversations, uh, with Don on this issue. And, um, as, as late as the planning and zoning board meeting to discuss this issue, I, I don't recall, I may have missed it, but I don't recall that Don said, I want this property taking out, taken out of the, out of the rezoning. So this, this is a little bit of a new wrinkle, but, uh, I'm, we're not arguing one way or the other.
To that point, if, if there were some resistance on that point, I would have asked you to create this and draft this for planning and zoning without that.
Correct.
So it's, it's, this is new news.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my, my thought on it is, uh, Mr. Haynes bought a property in two thousand and thirteen that was zoned as commercial. That's what he bought, and he wants to keep what he bought. I think that's really important, because compatibility, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go after compatibility, I mean, what about the multi-generational facility right in the middle of the neighborhood with a thirty-five-foot height limit? I mean, that, that's a ten-foot increase. That's, I don't know what our review process internally was. And, you know, that whole area, due to the special exception, the demand for residential was obviously higher than the demand for commercial. I mean, it was all commercial, but it just kept getting filled up with residential. And I think that that residential demand today is there, but for us to try to pin and say, you know, you have to be one or the other. The, um, change in the zoning is a controversial thing, and I think that, you know, Mr. Haynes stays involved. He's paying attention. Um, there are so many residents, I think, that don't even realize that this is happening to them. And, you know, that was why I was against certified, not sending certified mail. And so I think we better get used to this. And, and in my opinion, these properties, this is huge property rights issue for me, is for us to change his zoning i- is risky enough, and he's coming out just saying, don't, don't change, just keep it the way it is. And I think that that's a, that's a fair thing to say. Um, and I'd like to ask staff if there's anyone else other than Mr. Haynes that's, that's shown concern or requested to please let council know, um, within this area as well.
I'm unaware of any other objections. Dave?
Not, not that I'm aware of. All, you know, the seven hundred properties, um, this was the only one that was in question. And what year was the economic overlay district passed? Was that thirteen or?
I want to say twelve or thirteen.
Believe it was twelve. That's the other thing, Victor's, you know, he invested probably when he had that as well. And so I think, um, when you look at that property, there's, there's only so many options. And I think that he invested in it with those ideas in mind, and I think it's going to be okay. I've talked to some of the folks on Oak Lane as well, and I think it's going to be, um, it's going to be what it's always been. It's, it's always been a commercial property, and they moved in knowing that. And I, I think, uh, I think we're making the right move by removing it out, and I would extend that not to just Mr. Haynes, to any property owner that wants out of this. I think they, they deserve the right, so. That's all I have to say. Thank you. All right. Mr. Uh, Councilmember Willis, any comments?
Um, I, I am more in favor of removing one forty-three Oak Lane, because he does have the property right. And, um, I think, uh, that's what he bought was commercial, and if we can work it, I think we need to remove it.
Thank you very much. All right, counsel. Um, this one's the first one, the new, uh, city attorney, the correct motion on this one, if you don't mind, we would appreciate it.
Sure.
And whatever council member wants to take it, please.
My recommendation, uh, regarding ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two-one is to adopt the ordinance, um, as, as presented. Um, so, um, subject to removing one forty-three, um, Oak Lane from the ordinance.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve ordinance twenty-three, twenty-two-one with the removal, or as written with the removal of one forty-three Oak Lane.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way we can add to the, to, um, approve this taking out of, out of the ordinance, but with, um, the reasoning to, uh, contact the neighbors by postcard, whatever we got to do, the other neighbors in, on Oak Lane, to have them come to the next meeting to hear what they have to say about this and, uh, the zoning change? And the fact that there's only one way in and one way out of that, I know I talked to, um, about maybe in the um, about maybe in the industrial area, making another roadway, uh, I don't know how that would work, but, you know, the, I spent a lot of time with the people on Oak Lane through this paving and, and, uh, they've been through a lot there with their houses. And the main thing that they were, is like they didn't want commercial down there and I understand they bought knowing it was commercial, but, um, you know, we're trying to change, uh, things that happened in the past. We need more residential housing in our, uh, city. I just think that we need to make a special effort to make sure that other people on that street understand what's happening. And they, that was the thing when I was trying to get it, that road paved to help the business at the end with the flooding that has been neglected for years and years, that road, that they were afraid that there was going to be a hotel at the end. And I'm, you know, exaggerating to prove my point, but they, there's families down there now with children and the road is narrow and I'm concerned about commercial traffic going in and out of there. So I just think that we need to make the effort to those people and extend that this is what's happening and you need to come and speak up. So I don't know how to add that to the motion or...
My city manager, I think, was going there, is it naturally gonna...
Yeah, that, that, we would handle that administratively, uh, as not part of the motion or the ordinance, that's just something I'm, I've already directed Dave to do, is contact those owners on Oak Lane.
Not 700, Dave.
No, this, this, this will be, we'll, we'll probably put door hangers and maybe do a mail out or something.
Okay. Okay, that's all I got.
All right, I'll move, I'll move to approve ordinance number 23 dash 2021, uh, by also subject to the removal of the property at 143 Oak Lane.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Raymond and a second by Councilmember Willis to approve ordinance number 23, 2021, as written with the removal of 143 Oak Lane. Any other discussion, Dave? City clerk, would you please call the roll?
You have to open the public hearing, I believe.
Public hearing?
Oh, yes, this is public hearing, thank you. Um, this time, we, well, I had opened it up and Ms. Rosinko was the first public hearing. I don't have any other cards on this, but because it's, oh, I do, public hearing item, Ms. Roberts and any others, this is an open item, so please, thank you.
This is really related to three through nine, um, but I just wanted to act as support, um, what's being proposed here because one of my overall observations of number three through nine is that going back to the original vision for the North Atlantic streetscape, one of the goals of the city at the time was to have a mixed-use development, commercial, walkable, a walkable street there that would have shops, maybe mixed residential and commercial. And to me, I just wanted to mention this as part of the Thursday visioning session where we talked about this, where the city, I think consistent planning, strategic, long-term visioning would be extremely helpful where we would stick instead of doing it by special exception, which is what happened, you know, with North Atlantic and it's so sad, I mean, I'm a resident there and I'm just, it makes me so sad to see the missed opportunities that we've had. Um, what, uh, this owner has done is consistent with the original vision of North Atlantic and I just, um, asked the council to consider, you know, the, the long-term visioning that we're going through right now and the positive purposes of walkable communities that enable us to have small shops and mixed-use, um, residential and business, uh, community. And that North Atlantic was, is a prime opportunity for that. And it just, it just made me sad every time we would give up our, uh, that zoning to special exception because vision kept continuing to get lost. I think if we, we can resurrect it, I think this is consistent with that opportunity and that would be what I would deserve, uh, points three through nine.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, Daniel, anyone online who would like to comment on this? This is item number eight.
Yes, there is a John Steedley with his hand raised. John, you're unmuted, you have three minutes.
Hi, this is John Steedley, uh, I own a property on Tyler Avenue, uh, resident at 335 Harbor Drive. Um, I'm not in favor of the way this is being handled, um, there's been no public notice. I know many people that are not going to be happy about this downzoning from C1, uh, along that corridor because it restricts your ability to use your property in the future. Uh, I think the lawyer for the Oak property brought up a lot of good points about creating more patchwork. Um, on Tyler Avenue, the city has actually created more of a commercial corridor along there because they cut off access to Polk Avenue to get to the city. So anybody going to City Hall has to race by Tyler, so it's not really a residential area in many ways. Um, long story short, I think this is the city looking to make work for themselves. The only properties that have been rezoned are ones that are owned by the city. Um, it's shocking that this has not been mailed out and property owners have not been notified about the change in their property rights. And as the lawyer said, uh, it's easier to go down in zoning. If the demand is there to go residential, then it's easy for the property owners, but to regain a seat, a commercial zoning is nearly impossible. And a lot of these properties are run as Airbnbs and purchased with the intent to operate as Airbnbs as C1 zoning. So, um, I'm not in favor of this and I will certainly rally the cause to make sure people understand that the city is trampling our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel, any more?
No other hands raised.
Counsel, back to, back to us, any more? Okay, with that, I'll just restate the motion to adopt ordinance number 23, 2021, as written with the removal of 143 Oak Lane. And we got a motion from, um, Councilmember Raymond and a second by Councilmember Willis. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
City, uh, Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
All right, motion passes four to one to adopt ordinance number 20, 23, 2021, as written with the removal of 143 Oak Lane. Now we move to ordinance number 24, 2021, within the same agenda item. I don't think we need, the city attorney's already read this one?
Already read it, same motion would be in order.
Okay. And you recommended doing it separately like this, if I recall? Okay, so we're ready to essentially repeat.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 24 dash 2021 with the removal of the property at 143 Oak Lane.
Got a motion from Councilmember Raymond to adopt ordinance 24, 21 with, and a second, uh, by Councilmember Davis with the removal of 143 Oak Lane, almost identical to the first one. At this time, public comment? Anyone out there in the audience? I don't have any cards. I'm seeing our deputy city clerk shaking his head, no, there's no comments. City attorney?
Public comment for both ordinances for this property.
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah. And then, sorry, we didn't vote on this ordinance.
That is wonderful. We've got a motion and a second and we are ready to call the roll with that beautiful news. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes four to one to adopts ordinance number 24, 21, as written with the removal of 143 Oak Lane. That concludes agenda item number eight, I believe. Thank you all very much. We will jump back now to the, um, where are we, council? We're on three, help me out here. Three, okay. All right, we've gotten a general explanation, but I think we got to have this agenda item explained, Mr., or, Mr. City Attorney, you going to read?
Oh, go ahead and read, uh, the ordinances, this, this, two ordinances, same as last, you have a future...
Land use map amendment and a rezoning, uh, proposal. And, uh, let me read them both then, then you can take public input on both ordinances and then vote separately on the ordinances.
Understood.
Ordinance number 13 dash 2021, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of multiple parcels of real property generally known as Ocean Gardens, located on Ocean Garden Lane and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, from C1 commercial to R2 residential, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and corporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. So that's the ordinance on the proposed future land use map amendment. The next ordinance is ordinance number 14 dash 2021, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city-initiated rezoning of multiple parcels of real property generally known as Ocean Gardens, located at Ocean Garden Lane, from their respective current C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city's R2 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the properties subject to this ordinance are more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and an effective date. And this is first reading of both ordinances. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, I'll be interrupted.
Please.
With a point of order, it is 10 o'clock. If we want to continue, we'd have to get, uh, approval with council.
We got to change that ordinance. Um, looking for, uh, it's 10 o'clock on the dot, thank you, city manager for pointing that out, um, need a motion to extend with an amount of time?
I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting till 10:30.
I second it.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by Councilmember Raymond to extend to 10:30. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
All right, thank you again, city manager for that. Ordinance number 13, 2021 and number 14, 2021, we have had our city attorney read both of these at this time. I want to go ahead and put it out in public comment for the count, uh, for the, if there's anyone who wants to weigh in from the public. Seeing head shake and no from our deputy city clerk, opposing public comment back here, council? We're good, we can make a motion to adopt one?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 13 dash 2021.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Raymond and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum to adopt ordinance number 13, 2021, as written. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay, coming back now, looking for a motion for number 14, 2021?
I move that, uh, we adopt ordinance number 14 dash 2021.
Got a motion by Councilmember Raymond and a second by Councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance number 14, 2021, as written. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
All right, we're going to move on to agenda item that motion passes five to O for both ordinances, 13 and 14 there. Moving to agenda item number four, which is number 15, 2021 and 16, 2021, Mr. City Attorney.
Both ordinances involving sea spray townhomes located on Anchorage Avenue. Ordinance number 15 dash 2021, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of multiple parcels of real property generally known as sea spray townhomes, located on Anchorage Avenue and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, from C1 commercial to R2 residential, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and corporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. The next ordinance, uh, related to, um, sea spray townhomes is 16 dash 2021, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city-initiated rezoning of several parcels of property generally located on Anchorage Avenue and commonly referred to as sea spray townhomes, from the respective current C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the sea, to the city, R2 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing for the properties subject to this ordinance are more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and an effective date. This is first reading of both ordinances, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much, city attorney. So we've now heard, uh, the reading of both ordinances, number 15, 21 and 16, 2021. This is a residentially, uh, this is a commercially zoned property, uh, and we are changing the land, look, land use as we heard to R2 residential. There are currently, it is being used, there are homes there from what I, uh, I think for the most of these, and thank you for showing them out, um, and they're trying to change it, uh, the zoning as well to R2. So it's going from a low-density commercial zoning to a medium-density residential zoning. With that, this is a public hearing item for both items, 15 and 16, are there any public comment? Seeing none from the audience and/or online, bring it back to this council if we're good.
I have a question.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Yes, does this include the, um, I know these are the sea spread, uh, condos, but those buildings in the way in the back of Anchorage, the little apartment complex?
Rayo's property.
No, yeah, this, this, uh, this rezoning packet is for the 32 townhouse units.
What, what is the end of?
I'm sorry, sea spray. When you say the end of that, what...
The end of that street.
They're...
There's some small apartments.
Yeah, yes, those are duplexes further to the west.
What are they zoned at?
Um, I'm, I'd have to get a zoning map, I don't want to give you bad information.
Mr. Rosinka provided us with the map.
I'm assuming there are two.
Their, um, end of acreage, you took Mr. Rayo's property?
Yes. According to this map, they are yellow also. It's just above the X.
Okay. Well, I mean, but they're currently zoned as commercial, obviously, if that was your question.
Well, that was my question, are, why aren't we doing them as well as these towns?
They, they, they will be done. I, I mean, you, rest assured, we're going to get everything.
We don't have everything in this bag.
Yeah, this, this is just, uh, we're, we're taking it.
Same street it would be.
Yeah, we're taking it in bite sizes.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
No, thank you.
Counsel, any more questions? Councilmember Willis, I trust you'll speak up if you got a question?
Yes, I'll try to.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion to adopt, one at a time, number 15.
All right, I'll move to adopt ordinance number 15 dash 2021.
Got a motion by Councilmember Raymond, a second by Councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance number 15, 2021, as written. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
All right, public hearing, we've also closed on the, uh, number 16, 2021, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion for adopt ordinance, ordinance number 15 dash 2021.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis and a second by Councilmember Raymond to adopt ordinance number 16, 2021, as written. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Concludes agenda item number four, both items, uh, passed five O unanimously, going on to agenda item number five, ordinance number 17, 2021 and number 18, 2021, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, mayor, these, uh, ordinances involve Canaveral, the property Canaveral Woods condominium in ordinance, uh, this is 17 dash 2021, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation on multiple parcels of real property located on Clara Elizabeth Lane and generally known as the Canaveral Woods condominium and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too. and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, from C one commercial to R two residential, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and corporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. Next ordinance related to the same property is eighteen dash twenty twenty one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city initiated rezoning of several parcels of property generally located on Clara Elizabeth Lane. And commonly referred to as, uh, the Canaveral Woods condominium from their respective current city, a C one low density commercial zoning district designation to the city R two medium density residential zoning designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance are more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and an effective date. This is first reading of these ordinances, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, city attorney, that was number seventeen twenty twenty one and eighteen twenty twenty one. This is a public hearing item, if there are any public comments. Dr. Roberts, I want to make sure you did circle across multiple, um, agenda items, but when you came up and spoke, was that a message on behalf of all these public hearing items? Okay, thank you. Any public, anyone like to speak on this item? None from our deputy clerk, thank you. Closing the public hearing, bringing it back to council, looking for a motion to adopt them one at a time.
I move to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty one.
Got a motion by councilmember Raymond and a second by councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance number seventeen twenty twenty one as written. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Callum. Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Ordinance number seventeen twenty one, twenty one passes five oh. Moving on to ordinance number eighteen twenty twenty one.
I'll make a motion, we adopt eighteen twenty twenty one at the first reading.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Callum and a second by councilmember Raymond. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Callum. Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Motion passes five oh, or excuse me, ordinance number eighteen twenty twenty one. Move this on to agenda item number six, which includes, uh, number, ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty one and twenty 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 one, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, these ordinances, um, apply to Portside, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, Portside, um, Villa's condominium. Ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small scale future land use map amendment by changing the zoning, future land use map designation of multiple parcels of real property located on Portside Avenue, generally known as Portside Villa's condominium and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, from C one commercial to R two residential, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and corporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city initiated rezoning of several parcels of property generally located on Portside Avenue and commonly referred to as Portside Villa's condominium, from their respective current city, C one low density commercial designation to city R two medium density residential zoning district designation, providing for the property subject to this ordinance are more particularly depicted, legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and effective date. This is first reading of these ordinances, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, city attorney, that's, um, just heard ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty one and ordinance number twenty 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 one, this is a public hearing item. Open for public hearing, anyone who'd like to comment? And our deputy clerk, looks like he has no hands. I'm gonna close the public comment, bringing it back to this council, looking for an ordinance to adopt the first one, number nineteen.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty one.
I second it.
Got a motion by councilmember Davis, a second by councilmember Raymond. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Callum. Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Motion passes five oh, ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty one. Moving on to ordinance number twenty twenty one. For a motion to adopt.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty one.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Raymond, got a second by councilmember Willis to adopt ordinance number twenty 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 one, the city clerk?
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Callum. Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Ordinance twenty 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 one passes five oh. Moving on to agenda item number seven, ordinance number twenty one twenty twenty one and twenty two twenty twenty one, city attorney.
Okay, these ordinances, uh, related to Perlis Del Mar condominium. First ordinance, uh, is ordinance twenty one dash twenty twenty one. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use designation of multiple parcels of real property located on Joe Place, Maria Court and Manny Lane and generally known as the Perlis Del Mar condominium and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, from C one commercial to R two residential, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and corporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance twenty two dash twenty twenty one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city initiated rezoning of several parcels of property located on Joe Place, Maria Court and Manny Lane and generally known as the Perlis Del Mar condominiums from their respective current city, C one low density commercial zoning district designation to the city R two medium density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance are more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and an effective date. This is first reading of these ordinances, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, this is a public hearing item for number, ordinance number twenty one twenty twenty one and ordinance number twenty two twenty twenty one. Anyone from the public would like to comment, now is the time. Seeing none from the audience and confirming whether's deputy city clerk, none, public hearing items closed. Looking for an ordinance to adopt number twenty one twenty twenty one. Looking for a motion, sorry.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty one dash twenty twenty one.
My second.
Got a motion from councilmember Raymond, a second from councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance number twenty one twenty twenty one. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Callum. Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Motion for ordinance, excuse me, ordinance number twenty one twenty twenty one passes to, uh, five oh. Ordinance number twenty two twenty twenty one. Looking for a motion to adopt.
I move to make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty two dash twenty twenty one.
Second it.
Got a motion by councilmember Davis and a second by councilmember Raymond to adopt ordinance number twenty two twenty twenty one. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Callum. Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Ordinance twenty two twenty twenty one passes five oh. Now we are going to, um, we've already addressed item number eight. Uh, and so we are moving to, uh, looks like our final item, number nine on the agenda, which includes ordinance number forty two twenty twenty one and forty one twenty twenty one, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay, this, uh, these ordinances pertain to property with, uh, address of eighty eight ten North Atlantic Avenue. Uh, the numbering sequence got a little messed up on this one, so we're gonna take ordinance forty two before forty one. Ordinance number forty two dash twenty twenty one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of parcel, of a parcel of real property approximately point three zero acres, more or less, with a parcel ID of twenty four dash thirty seven dash fourteen dash twenty eight dash A and an address of eighty eight ten North Atlantic Avenue, more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, from C one commercial to R two medium density residential, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and corporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. Uh, the second ordinance, the rezoning companion ordinance is ordinance forty one dash twenty twenty one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a city initiated rezoning of a parcel of real property approximately point three zero acres, more or less, with a parcel ID of twenty four dash thirty seven dash fourteen dash twenty eight dash A and an address of eighty eight ten North Atlantic Avenue and more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, from city C one low density commercial zoning district designation to the city R two medium density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance are more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability and an effective date. This is first reading of these two ordinances, and again, I'd ask the council to take up ordinance forty two twenty twenty one before forty one twenty twenty one, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, this is a public hearing item. We are open up public hearing item for number forty two twenty twenty one and forty one twenty twenty one. If anyone has any public comments, please let us know. Seeing none from the audience and or at home. We are gonna bring it back to this council with a recommendation to adopt ordinance number forty two twenty twenty one. Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt forty two dash twenty twenty one.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Willis, a second by councilmember Raymond to adopt forty two, ordinance number forty two twenty twenty one. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Callum. Mayor Morrison. Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Ordinance passes five oh, ordinance number forty two twenty twenty one, moving on to ordinance number forty one twenty twenty one. This council looking for a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance forty one twenty twenty one on the first reading.
Second it.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Callum, a second by councilmember Raymond to adopt ordinance number forty one twenty twenty one on first reading. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Callum. Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Ordinance forty one twenty twenty one passes along with all the others, that was an exercise, but we got through those public hearing items, um, five oh. So now we are moving on to items for discussion, wanna pause, let everyone know we are at ten twenty one, nine minutes from our approved time. What do we want to do? I think we've already handled Pro Champ's update, I'm just kinda jumping down, financial report, that's an informational item, we got three items left. I think, do we want to take them in order?
No.
Okay.
Item number ten.
Item number, yep, item number ten, compensation for the city elected officials postponed, uh, at the last twelve twenty one meeting. City manager, would you like to give us?
Sure, um, if council wants to take up this item, um, there is no hurry, if you did want to put it off again, we certainly could. Um, but if council wants to, sure.
I make a motion, we postpone it to the next meeting.
Yeah, and if we can put it at the front of the meeting, would the council agree to that? Cause I think that's what happens, we keep putting it to the back. Yep.
Okay, so.
Alright, so postpone to the front of next meeting.
Early in the meeting is reasonable, pos, I mean, obviously, don't put it in front of something that's, you know.
Urgent.
Significant, yes, urgent, but, um, I'd like to take that up.
It's been thirty years on this one, another month won't hurt anything.
So we're moving to postpone to the, to the February meeting, is that what this council wants to do? Okay, so, I mean, if we have consensus, councilmember Willis, are you okay with postponing this to be on the next agenda in February?
Not a problem.
Awesome, alright, council, if we're okay, we'll go on to item number eleven, this is, uh, councilmember Raymond's item.
Same thing, I think we can postpone it because I think it's gonna be a discussion. We'll postpone that until, um, the next meeting, February.
And if we can put that one higher on the priority too, that'd be helpful too, so we hit it fresh. Um, any opposition to that, postpone, I think it's her item, she has full right to do that. Okay, good, um, item number twelve. Um, I would like to give, um, I know we have people here, uh, an explanation, I don't know if we will get through to this, um, but, but this is something that, when I put together the agenda packet, I tried to outline, um, you know, the city formally has went through A one A, uh, each year, and we have trying to find it here, uh, oh, I'm too far back, and we've done resolutions, we did them in twenty fourteen, I think we did them in twenty fifteen. I can find it, here we go, where's? Yes, A one A, that's the one we're on, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so this is updating resolution number twenty nineteen oh one and consider adding the council's opposition to a proposed state road, uh, A one A roundabout, this is regarding, um, project number four three zero two oh two dash five, I submitted this one, obviously, and I've, um, this was brought up actually by, uh, Mr. Hodge, who's hanging in tough with us tonight, Ms. Hodge. I mean, and he raised a good question at the last meeting and said, hey, it was, I'm not gonna try to quote the meeting, sometime, I think in August, September, where we had brought, it was the first time this council, the, I guess, the old council, for lack of better words, it, it talked about, hey, what do we think of the meeting? And at that time, I think there was, I agree with Mr. Hodge, consensus of, hey, we never asked for this roundabout. Um, we want to, let's oppose it, there was public comments and the citizens were, were kinda unified and we got out of there with also the understanding that, hey, this takes time, and so we gave it some time. And, you know, when he had brought that back, my thought was, look, I don't know enough people to justify not at least coming out with a position against it, and today was the first time I actually saw data from an email that I think Ms. Hodge had sent to this entire council on the public comments from F dot, which was well over, I think we were the number eighty something percent now. That's just looking at bar graphs, I, I'd like to dig into that, but I want to give everyone an update on something our city manager and our planner, um, and probably your community development director had an update with. We had met with department, um, secretary, uh, Mr. Secretary Purdue for District Five for F dot, we had a, 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 a call and he had the meeting was that he wants to be a resource for this community. The first big takeaway from that meeting was that he said the idea that F dot, and please correct me if I quote him wrong, is just going to pack their bags and not help Cape Canaveral if we oppose a roundabout, which is something I've heard, we've all heard, kinda makes, ma- ma- maybe sense from, I guess, possible, but historically, I don't know of any cases of that happening, but most importantly, his word was, they're not going to do that. They are very interested in Cape Canaveral, the citizens being in support of what we do there. Now, they are fully, from what I understand, believers that a roundabout is the best solution for this community. So their resources are, what can we do to help Cape Canaveral get on board to, to realize this is a good project? We talked about everyone. The majority of the people agree that A one A today needs improvements, we pretty much all agree on that, every. What the state proposed as the best solution, and they firmly believe it, with their engineers, is the roundabout. From my experience, what the citizens think is, no, not the roundabout. And so the last thing, and what I think I'm most excited that we talked about, was that they will, they are going to present at least some sort of preliminary, what that other option looks like. So we've only seen the roundabout, but when we originally go back to our resolutions that we drafted every year, it was to align International Drive, it had red lights, it had safety. So they went down some exercise with their designs, they saw it and it raised concerns, and then they came over to the roundabout, and we had talked, and I'm gonna stop and let our city manager get in here with the time that's left. get in here with the time that's left, but I said, if you can do that, that would be great because honestly, if you believe the roundabout is the best bet based on this other design, show the citizens that, but we've only seen one option and it's not going over very well within this community at all. And so, um, we talked a little bit about, um, surveys and polling the community, but FDOT, the last I got, if I remember, it was Friday, they're gonna work on showing that other design for us to look at.
Yeah, that was a great recap, Mayor, and, and you did most of the talking and you got it, you nailed it. Uh, everything he said was correct. Uh, the other takeaways that I have is that the secretary wants to have the same conversation with each council member and will be reaching out to my office to schedule those with you. And finally, he, he expressed interest in working with certain pe, members of the community who are, uh, more vocal, perhaps more influential, to make ambassadors of them in the community. And I think that's a great idea because if it is, if the roundabout is a great idea, we need to get people who can get on board with that, who can spread the word so that they're not fighting this uphill battle all by themselves because they're not getting there right now by themselves. So I preface that with the big, if it's the best thing for the city, that's probably a good way to do it. So out there in the community, if you have people who want to be ambassadors, who are open-minded or willing to talk to people, let me know, let the mayor know, um, because we'll put you in touch with FDOT and if, if there can be an ambassador program, that would be how it's done.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
At the Space Coast League of Cities meeting, I had, I sat next to Kelly Lane. And Kelly Lane works for Debbie May, Senator, our State Senator Debbie Mayfield. And, uh, we started talking about this because whenever I have an opportunity, I talk about improvements about A1A, any state senators or anybody that has to do with any office. And, um, I said that we feel like we're, we're the stepchildren because everybody else had improvements and we have gotten nothing. And we are the busiest because of Seaport. So anyway, she's, she's from Tallahassee and she just recently moved to Indian Harbor Beach. And so we, we're talking about this and really I, I have mixed feelings, I'll tell you that. Anyway, I, I'm open-minded. I'm very open-minded about many things. Anyway, what Kelly told me, she's from Tallahassee, that the people are begging for roundabouts, begging for them because they feel that it keeps the traffic flowing and moving. So it's, it's just very interesting, you know, and they're a large urban area. So I just thought that was interesting coming from Kelly. And, uh, I understand that other calls were made by other council members to Senator De, Debbie Mayfield's, um, office, and she is handling this. So, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, and we're actually at ten thirty-one. I think we need at least ten more minutes if this council has.
I, cause I have other questions.
We're over the time limit. We need an extension. Any council, I mean, you can, we're not gonna be, I think, taking any direction, so if you need to go, but ten minutes, I mean, we gotta go till ten forty, I think, at least.
Ten minutes and we're outta here in five.
We're talking about the, the same.
Yeah, we just need to wrap it up. We're over the time limit now.
Alright.
So, looking for a motion to extend to ten forty-two.
I'll make a motion. We extend to ten forty-two and try to get outta here sooner.
Okay, second. I'll second it. Uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by myself, Mayor Morrison, to extend it ten forty-two.
Councilmember Davis? Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Okay, so if we got ten minutes, maybe just to, please give everyone a chance, a couple minutes, Pro Tim?
Um, yeah, I just, it does, so, uh, for the A1A thing, are we not doing a resolution until we come to make our stand, until they come back with this other plan? Is that, is that where we're at?
Uh, no. My biggest fear is that we don't continue to talk about this in front. And there, we're gonna get down the road in six months and they're going to say, oh, we've got all this done and we're moving forward. I think as soon as possible, we come out with a new resolution. I'd like to take the resolution that we adopted last time. It's been two years for the next meeting. And I think, I will give, for me personally, between now and the next meeting, we should have a resolution drafted and ready to go that opposes this until we see something and we can amend the resolution, but I think we need to take a position.
Right.
They can change our mind. And I think that as long, the worst mistake we can do is not be willing to listen to them. So I am willing to listen to them and their argument, but between now, you know, a meeting or two, that would be the most I would give it, but I at least would like to get the resolution started and we can start reviewing it at the next meeting.
I agree. So do we need a motion on that?
Yes, I just wanna make sure. Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, I would like to at least hear what they have to say if there is an option out there. Um, but we can certainly have a resolution going in the background.
Yes.
What is your resolution? You want a resolution for the improvements of A1A?
Yes, and I wanted to specify um, an opposition of a roundabout. Now whether we, to have that at least ready to go for the next meeting, and we can take it out, but until we put our foot down early in the process, I don't think we're gonna get the, make the progress that we need. The citizens have spoke loud and clear. They don't want this. I'm willing to invest in a survey because the worst thing is, is I'm wrong on this. If we wanna put a survey out in this city, I think we can do that and see where they are on the roundabout. That'd be the only reason, but I think between now or at January to have something to review by February and adopted by March would be very reasonable to me. Take the last resolution that we adopted, update it, and be more specific with how we feel about the roundabout. And, and I think if FDOT can get involved between now and then, we can change our mind. We can say, hey, you know what? You've convinced us, but here's how we feel today. It's, um,
I'd like to hear what they have to say. I, I would like to hear what they have. We haven't heard. I have not heard what they have to say.
When did he say he could be here?
We, we haven't heard.
I don't think he said a date.
What FDOT has to say.
How long are we willing to wait though? I mean, uh, it would be ideal if they could meet February. I mean, the sooner the better.
I just, I just wanna, yeah, that's all. I, I just haven't heard back from them. So I would like to hear what they have to say.
Well, we're not gonna make a resolution that we don't wanna hear from them. It's just a, a, a basic plan on where we're gonna go and where we're gonna stand, and we don't even have to adopt it, just a draft. Is that, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, at least to show that we are making intentional movement forward.
Right.
And I would say March would be the latest. I would wanna wait before I adopt it, but at least have it reviewed at the next meeting.
And then be, between that time, if they come up with a brilliant plan that we all agree on, we just throw it away.
And my hope is that they do.
Right, mine too.
Yeah.
I'm good.
She was first.
You go with your question to the city manager. Were you asking if they had, get a timeframe?
I, yes. I don't, they said they are willing to meet and, and come back and they were trying to have the individual meetings with council members, but I don't think we talked about a time on when that would be, and that's where I asked the manager, do you remember when he said he'd be available?
I mean, uh, it appears it'd be probably sooner than later that they're trying to get this settled.
I understood that he was gonna try to schedule meetings with council members this week.
Okay.
So I expected an email when I arrived to work today and it wasn't there yet. So any day I should be hearing from him, I'm assuming.
Then I would like to speak to FDOT because they're gonna speak to us individually before we put the staff into, to doing this work, at least see where they stand.
Yeah, I agree with Kim.
Question for staff, if we updated the resolution, okay, well, I mean, we pretty much copy and paste it, right? I mean, we're not removing anything.
The only thing that I'm aware of that council would want changed is an additional item about opposition to the roundabout. Other than that, it would stay the same.
Yeah, so the resolution I'm proposing, just to, cause I agree on staff, you don't wanna work in, working in, is the one that I included, um, if I can find it there, it's, it goes through the items that, that we really wanna copy and paste.
So this would be, um, wo, wo, staff will remain at the ready for resolution. Let's keep in mind, resolutions are a one-reading thing. So, um, and we don't usually put draft resolutions on for consent or for, um, discussion items. But we are at the ready to just take the last one, copy and paste it, put a twenty-twenty-two date on it, and add this item to it when council says.
Okay, if we can get a presentation from FDOT at the February meeting, I think we would be able to walk out of that meeting. And we'll know what we wanna do.
Will we, are we requesting that, um, they send a representative here for the February meeting to make a presentation?
To show the other option specifically, at least a preliminary. Um, I think that's as long as we're being reasonable. I mean, I, I don't know how in-depth the other option would be. I think if they went down that road and they looked at the other option, they should have something kinda ready. Um, but.
That would be the signalized intersection.
Yes, some sort of update.
Okay, we'll make the request.
Yeah. And, um, yes, my hope is over the next sixty days, we we take a position if we can, but I'm looking forward to hear from FDOT. We'll see what they come back with. That's all I have. Thank you very much. So is, if there's any comments from the public, Councilmember Pro Tim Kellum?
No, I just wanted to bring up the, uh, Pro Champs thing and just a, a brief thing. Um, I had met with Dave and, um, Brian prior to, uh, Pro Champs, um, coming to meet with them. And we talked about how things are happening and, you know, that we need to give it a chance and everything. And I talked to Todd too about is there a way when, once the information gets to us that, you know, Brian was saying that he has to decipher what's what, put it here, put it there, figure out where it's gonna go? Is there, you know, do we need more help? Is there a way we can hire a temporary temp agency to decipher this, to help Brian to speed up the, um, you know, the, the way that it's handled once it gets to the city? Because he, you know, when, in our discussion, he, he said, there's a lot to this and we're learning and so is there, can we get a consent from the council or Mr. Morley maybe could speak on it, um, about hiring a temp agency just to get us to the next step?
I, I think, um, perhaps this can be as simple as if council, uh, will be open if, if we feel like manpower needs are, are not being met to perhaps a, uh, mid-year adjustment in the budget for funding a, a temporary part-time position if it's necessary. I think it, we, we need to get there first to see if it's necessary.
Right.
But, uh, if council's open to that, I would be certainly glad. I won't be shy about asking for money for staff. Uh, if that's council, if council's opening that door for that, I'll certainly say, yes, I'd love that.
I, I think we still need to give them a, a chance, an opportunity to show us exactly what they're going to do and how they're going to do it.
Well, my point is when the information that's coming in now gets to our city staff, that they need help putting it where it needs to go and, and getting it right so we can take these people to the magistrate if it comes to that, just to help in that department, you know, not a, not an inspector, just an administrative kinda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor? A, a quick comment. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate that, um, Mickey. Um, as per the contract with Pro Champs, as we've all discussed, they are going to be providing us the required documentation for us to prepare the notice of violation and we're gonna go, we'll, we'll prosecute it from there on out. So Pro Champs, let's say, takes it to the twenty-yard line, we take the ball from them and we run it into the end zone. So, yeah, we're going to be, there's gonna be a period of time where we're going to be deluged with a mountain of documentation and data coming from, um, Pro Champs. And so it'll just be a, a function of staff time. How much, how much, how big are these bites going to be that we can process and send to the, to the special magistrate, um, every month? Um, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh, we, I, I really, I, I I appreciate that. I don't, I don't have an answer for you. I just don't know how much information or how much time it's going to take to properly prepare each case. I think as we get into this now, I'll have a better feel for that and, and we can maybe get with Todd and Todd can report back to the council. I mean, I, I appreciate the offer and it may be something that we wanna do, but.
Message heard. We won't be shy about asking for help.
Okay, I just, it's just important and, you know, if there's delays because we don't have the right staffing to get it, you know, it needs to be done sooner than later.
Understand. I agree.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, one other question is how do we go about making a motion or whatever we need to downsize these meetings, to limit the agenda items? Do we need to motion to make two meetings a month? Do we have, need to have a workshop? I mean, is that something that has to be brought up in the next meeting for discussion?
I think we're, yeah, we're ironically over the time now. So, um, I would put that on the next agenda about meeting time. So with that, we're adjourned.